Welcome everyone to the September first two thousand twenty-two school committee meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and remote attendance should count towards quorum. Meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on E-CAP. This meeting is open to the public, we'll take. Questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen, please make sure to include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer questions, however, we will not read questions that have already been answered. All right, with that. Um, I'd like to make a motion to enter to executive session and we will return to open session. For the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining for unit B and par professional unit. And um, to comply with the open meeting law to review minutes of prior executive sessions. May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two and June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, do I have a second?
Star second.
All right, roll call vote. Uh, Durant, yes, oh Caroline's here.
To Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
Caroline, we're taking a vote to go into executive. Thumbs up.
You know what, I've unmuted twice, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I did say yes, but I guess I was sorry.
All right, we'll meet you in executive and we'll be back.
Okay. Okay. Right now. 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 Okay.
Okay, I think that's everyone. So, welcome back. Um, okay, so for item two, I would like to make a motion that we table a vote on the executive session minutes for May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two and June twenty-third, two thousand two, pending review from council. Do I have a second?
Star second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. Um. So, vote to appoint a school committee representative to the finance director's interviews. Chrissy?
Hi, everyone. As you know, our business director, Marilyn Gordon, is retiring. We are very happy for her upon her retirement, although we will miss her dearly. We are looking, we have posted the position for to hire somebody as soon as possible, as Marilyn's end date is the beginning of October, and we are looking to appoint a committee currently, and we would like a school committee member to be on the committee.
So, is anyone interested?
Michelle, could I just ask, I know Jen is already but she is the person who has all the financial expertise. See, Jen, this is what you get for being like so skilled in so many areas. She's on the audit committee. I mean, I just can't even make a list, so. Is it too much, though? Is it too much?
No, it's Chrissy, I guess, how, um, what are we, what are you thinking for time commitment?
Um, so with Marilyn leaving, uh, you know, within a few weeks, we are looking to get this process running quickly and get, get through with the process within, you know, within a month or so. So, um, if that, that's probably the commitment as far as, you know, a few times a week. While we review applications and go over interviews and second rounds and things like that, so.
Yeah, I can, I think, again, if nobody else is really clamoring to do this, I think I can. It's just, it would be a matter of the sooner I can have an idea of times, the easier it will be for me to block those off and make sure that I'm available.
Yep.
Jen, if you find that it's really not possible, if you start, we might have to go back again, but I, I would be willing to sort of be a backup, but I do think that you're by far the most qualified.
Okay, thank you.
We can make a motion to nominate Jen with an alternate for Caroline.
I don't know if you can legally have an actual alternate, but I think you could have, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know if we'd have to go back and I just, to reappoint, maybe not. I mean, this is a superintendent's committee essentially, even though it's a hiring committee, so you probably could have an alternate, as long as it were, um, you know, agreeable to Leisha and Chrissy, so. Yes, whatever you think. I mean, I think Jen's probably going to be able to do it because she somehow does cram about forty-eight hours into every twenty-four, but but I just, I didn't want you to find that it's really overwhelming and then not feel like you had, you know, the Chetney choice.
Well, I don't have to drive anybody to hockey this year. Because my last hockey player has a license in a, a car, so. I have so much more free time. It's amazing.
It's a game changer.
It totally is.
That is, absolutely. So I say we just go with Jen, with the understanding that if, for some reason, she has to withdraw, um, that maybe I could, I could take her place. I think we can do it that way. What do you think, Chrissy?
I think that sounds great.
Do a nomination and with an alternate, just so you don't have to come back to us? Because our next meeting isn't for two weeks. I'm assuming you're gonna be getting going before that.
Yes, please.
Is the rest of the committee okay with that type of a nomination? Okay, then I'll make a nomination to nominate, um, Jen as the primary, um, school committee representative for the finance director interviews, and if she's unable to do any part of that, Caroline as her alternate.
Wiseman, second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, great. Congratulations, you two.
Thank you.
Okay.
It all goes for Jen.
Um. Number six about the update on the resource officer, I'm gonna make a motion to table that for a future meeting. Um, could I get a second?
Second, Luca.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. Personnel changes. Retirement Administrative Assistant to Director of Operations. Chrissy?
Jody Allen, Administrative Assistant to the Director of Operations, retired effectively on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. This, um, this past July, after twenty years in the district. Jody was hired in two thousand two to work in the business office at Central Administration as an accounts payable receivable clerk. In two thousand thirteen, she transferred to fill the role of Administrative Assistant to the Director of Operations. Over the years, Jody has also served as the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Directors for FEE, which is the Foundation for Excellence in Education in Easton. And I just want to also add that Jody was the sunshine as you entered the office in Central Administration. Um, she is already greatly missed, um, and, and she just had this wealth of knowledge that was this institutional knowledge of this town and the inner workings of the school district, and, um, we, we are very happy for Jody, but, um, we miss her dearly.
All right, our letter. Dr. Cabral, please accept this as a formal notice of um, retirement from the Eastern Public Schools effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And enjoyed my twenty years here and serving the East, uh, community of Easton, respectfully, Jody Allen. Caroline?
I'll just echo what Chrissy essentially said. Um, Jody, of course, was in reception for much of the time that she worked for the district, and she was just always so upbeat. I mean, a real bright light. And, um, it was just, and you're exactly right. I mean, Jody's father was with the district for many, many years, and so she had all of his knowledge that she was able to, you know, kind of consume, and then she had her own. So she really, I mean, she seemed to know what had happened thirty years ago and twenty years ago, and it was just really helpful sometimes when there would just be a question of, you know, just kind of the practices that, um, were ta, had taken place in the past and then had, you know, sort of morphed over time. So she was a great resource, but mostly she was just as upbeat a person as she'd ever hoped to meet. So I'm certainly gonna miss her personally, and I'm sure everyone else will as well.
Uh, Jackie?
Thanks. So I can't even imagine not seeing Jody there. Um, you know, as Caroline and Chrissy said, she was very upbeat and always had that nice bowl of candy right there. Um, but she just, she knew everything, and if she didn't, she would figure it out or find somebody that did. I went to her so many times over the years for help, for answers, for questions. Sometimes just we chat when I came in the office. She's just, she's, she's just a fun, great person, and she was a really good friend to me during some difficult times, too, and I just, she's just a real, genuine, wonderful person, and I'm really, really gonna miss her.
Nancy?
Um, Jody's very helpful, um, with, uh, she was very helpful with the bus in, uh, issues um, that people had, and I would call, you know, be frantically calling her at eight o'clock, "The bus isn't here. What are we doing?" So she was very helpful, and again, always nice to see her when walking the office. So wish her the best of everything as she retires.
All right, thank you.
Michelle, can I just say a couple things?
I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
Kind of blending into the background. Um, I, I probably worked more with Jody before school committee when she would, um, have to approve some things, you know, uh, there were some things for either boosters or packs that would need to go through the office to be approved, and she was always so incredibly responsive. We were, of course, you know, sometimes a little unorganized or getting something through at the last minute, and she never left us hanging, so was just incredibly helpful to, um, to different, um, parent groups and, and support groups and directly to students, too. I, at some point, uh, in the past, um, I think work permits might have been handled through central office at some point. And so I know that at least one of my kids had to work directly with her on that and, and actually commented like, wow, she emailed me back immediately and was very friendly, so, uh, just really just super helpful to everybody she worked with, so we'll really miss her and thank her for her service.
Great, all righty, thank you. Um, so can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Jody Allen effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two with regrets?
O'Neil, so moved with very sincere regret.
Wiseman, second. All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. I wish her lots and lots of luck. Um, COVID update, Chrissy?
At this point, we don't have an update. Um, so I'm not sure if this is something we want to keep on the agenda or not. Um, but fingers crossed that we continue to not have updates.
Maybe we could not unless you have something to say, and then just let us know. So going forward, we'll take that off. Okay. Wow, I didn't think that day would ever come.
Michelle?
Yes.
Michelle, I'm gonna slightly disagree. I think we could skip a couple of meetings. But I have to say, I've been hearing from some people who have kids in college, and I guess COVID is just sweeping through the colleges that started just a week or two ago, so. Um, you know, I just, we don't know what's gonna happen, and of course, there's going to be, as well, we think, toward the end of September, maybe as early as that, this new vaccine that would be targeted to Omicron, so that may be something else that will be, you know, as we have in the past, at least publicizing, if not offering vaccines to clinics, that type of thing. So I'm wondering if maybe
How about like the first?
Two or three meetings from now, you know, that we, yeah. I just hate to say we're just not gonna talk about COVID anymore because I don't think it has left us.
Okay, all righty. Um, public comment?
There's nothing right now.
Okay, great. Then superintendent notes, she's not here. Uh, so assistant superintendent notes, Chrissy?
So I just want to share with you that we had our opening of school. The teachers came back on Tuesday, and the students came back yesterday. Um, it was a wonderful opening. Um, the middle school, I made sure I was there right at the beginning, uh, because we do have a little bit of a new traffic flow. Um, Jackie, I saw you. I saw you in, in your card as I'm standing there waving. Um, but I just want to let people know that, you know, over the next few months, as the, the, the the footprint changes throughout campus to, just to please continue to have patience. Um, you know, on opening day, when, when parents were dropping off at the middle school, everybody was there with a smile, and it was really nice just, just to see the collaboration between the, the parents understanding, the students trying to find their way, and, um, through the parking lot, as well as the, the, the staff there helping. Our crossing guards are amazing. They did a great job kind of figuring out where to direct the kids to walk and where to go. So, um, so I just wanted to share that. And at dismissal, a specific request from the middle school to please not come early. Um, don't come too early because it's a backup and a backlog, and it's hard for, for people to get in and out of the parking lot. So please don't come too early for dismissal at the middle school. Um, but overall, as I walked through schools, it was fun to see the kids back. Um, you know, I, I, I was talking with somebody recently that while we say let's, we're, it seems like we're getting back to normal, normal. Um, we really can't, we have to acknowledge what we went through and that there, it's a new normal. And, you know, we, we have, um, we've learned a lot through the process of the past few years, and we are, um, you know, moving forward, and I think we have more experience and, and great outlook on things, and, and our students are have definitely learned to persevere. So, um, I just wanted to commend our staff and our families and our students for a great day, a great opening day, and I'm sure some of you will, will share about that as well. Um, I also wanted to share with you along the lines of opening that food services, so there is some change with purchasing of meals. Um, the first thing I just want to share is that Massachusetts is one of the few states that have passed free meals for students this year, which is fantastic. However, last year it was federally funded, um, and because it was federally funded, everything, almost everything was, was free. Um, some of the à la carte items were not, but, but, you know, every, everything else, a lot of things were free. The, what is free right now is limited. Um, the, what is free, and we will be providing communication to families. This is a glitch we kind of found, um, that if you purchase a meal, if you, if you get a meal from the cafeteria with a milk, for example, the milk is free. But if you go up to buy a milk by itself, you have to pay sixty-five cents. So, um, so these are some things that we're working out. We are encouraging students to, if you, um, if you take three things, that's considered a meal. So, um, we are encouraging students to take an apple or a bag of carrots along with the milk. They can save those for later. Um, so then, you know, that, that, that is something that, that, um, would be more cost, uh, appropriate. Um, but if, if parents do see that there is a charge, that is the reason. Um, and we will be providing more information on what items are considered à la carte. And it is also only one meal that is free, so, so one breakfast meal and one lunch meal. If you go back for a second meal, you will have to pay for that. So I just wanted to, this is literally things that we are just figuring out yesterday and today. And so as the students actually went through the lines and we saw some of this, um, so I just wanted to alert you and alert, alert our viewers. Um, and we will be providing more information for families. Okay, and then lastly, one thing I did not share that I really was, this is an exciting thing that happened, was, um, over the summer, Chris Getchel, Principal Getchel, and Assistant Principal Brian Aries from Richardson Homestead presented at the M S A A, which is the Mass, Massachusetts School Administrators Association. They presented to their colleagues, they actually put in and, um, submitted a proposal, uh, which was accepted around creating a school constitution and follow up with positive behavioral support strategies. And I was able to attend their session. I went down to Plymouth where the conference was. And it was wonderful. I was very proud. I felt like a proud mom as I was sitting there watching them, um, share their practices at Richardson Homestead and how they align to the district vision and the district core values. And it was the, the, the audience was also very engaged. They walked away with concrete, um, concrete items to take away, and Chris and Brian have now created a nice little network of, of, um, of colleagues that, that they are bouncing ideas off of outside of Easton. So I just wanted to share that with you because we have some other things coming up. Um, some other teachers that are presenting at conferences that I just want to keep you informed because it's really nice to hear that our, our, our experts are going out to share, um, their experiences in Easton. So, um, I think that's all I have for you this evening. Um, but oh, the opening, you know, this is, it's only been a week since we met last, and opening day was, was the biggest event, and it went, it went over without a hitch, except some of the transportation, but we thank you for your patience and some of the, um, the, the construction around town.
Great, thank you. All right, school committee notes. Uh, Caroline, do you have anything?
Well, I'll just say quickly, um, you know, I've always appreciated the fact that we have, as school committee members, been invited to uh, the district-wide portion of the opening day activities, and I, um, this year I would felt particularly uplifted just seeing the enormous energy and enthusiasm that all of the teachers in one room together, um, emitted, and also just the warmth and genuine joy with which everyone seemed to be greeting each other. Um, you know, you can tell that it's a real community. And, um, it was, of course, Leisha, as usual, did a very comprehensive um, sort of review of, of new initiatives and, and other things going on in the district, but what I took away mostly was just that feeling of just being completely uplifted by the energy. So that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Um.
Michelle, I'm so sorry. There is one thing that I forgot. I'm gonna share after everybody.
No, go ahead.
Um, I, I did want to share that I, we have, we, a new thing this year that Teresa Skinner spearheaded, our Director of Student Services, which was Operation Backpack. Um, so Cory Ahern at the Department of, um, I know it's not the Department of Health, but at the Department of Public, of Public Services in Easton, he was instrumental on getting, um, lots of backpacks and contacted, you know, we were in collaboration with him. And Teresa sent out an email to all, all families saying that we had backpacks, and we have handed out over a hundred backpacks, free backpacks to families in Easton. Um, so kudos to Teresa's team and to the, and to Cory. Thank you for your support. Um, it's, it's been wonderful, and to think, you know, that this is, this has been such a need in Easton. Um, and I really appreciate it. You know, in the past, we've had them in guidance or, or in, um, our principals' offices. But this year, by Teresa soliciting and asking, asking, "Who needs one? Come get it." It, it was, we, we were able to hand out many, many more, and the backpacks had supplies in them as well. So thank you so much.
That's awesome. Um, okay, Jackie, did you have anything to me?
Nothing tonight. Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, uh, Nancy?
Yes, of course I do. Um, first of all, thank you. Um, the opening day was great, and I want to just relate Caroline's, uh, views because it was awesome, and Jen did a great job uh, with her speech and, uh, everybody. It was, it was really nice. And the other thing with what, um, Chrissy just said about the backpacks, if you look at the district newsletter, I hope this really continues. I know sometimes we start, I mean, COVID kind of put a kibosh on everything, so this district newsletter is very informative and has lots of places to go and look for things if you need information, but just to, you know, keep you up with what's going on when we're not around. So thank you for doing that. Another reminder, Tuesday is the state primary. Please go and vote at OA. You, I believe you have until tomorrow to vote hmm, at Town Hall, but I'm not sure because they only work a half day, uh, on Friday. So anyway, vote Tuesday and get informed about all the candidates that are running. Um, a note from Hazel Varela, the community calendars will be available in about two weeks, she said. They're in print now. She did the proofreading. She and, uh, Dan Paray, so. Um, and the topic this year are, is the Eastern Public Schools. So on the cover are, the, the middle of it will be the Blanche Ames School, but around it, surrounding it are all the current and previous schools in town. So it's a little bit of history there, and then Caroline and I were both, uh, requested to write articles, so hopefully they'll, uh, meet the acceptance of everybody. I don't know, it was kind of a, ah, had to write an article. So, um, and again, thank you to everybody at EPS, teachers, everybody from Administ, everybody. Thank you for making EPS such a great place to work and be a student and a teacher and all that. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Jen?
Um, let's see. Just, uh, opening day was great. Again, just echoing, um, Caroline and Nancy's comments that the, the energy in the room and just seeing people outside kind of bumping into each other as they were walking in and hugs and high fives and, and laughing and joking. It was really, really nice to see, um, and reflects in that such strong sense of community that we have among our staff. Um, to tag on a little bit about voting on Tuesday, it'll be at OA, seventy, seven AM to eight PM, and it's a school day, and the parking lots, um, will have some restrictions, so the lot near the stadium and the first line near the gym will be reserved for voters. So for anybody watching, um, if you have a high schooler who drives to school, maybe that could be a day to do a drop-off instead or carpool if they are allowed to have passengers in their car or take the bus if they're available, eligible to. Um, or at least get there early so, um, they can find parking. And, um, I think I went to a, a training on Tuesday. I'm actually a poll worker, and, um, there so far have been a few thousand vote by, votes already cast by mail. Um, so it'll be interesting to see how many people vote in person versus by mail, but it may be a lower volume um, of, of voters than in past primaries because of the vote by mail option and the fact that there's been a pretty good take-up of that option. So it'll be interesting to see, and then can maybe help us with planning, um, for future primary years. That's it.
Great. Um, Chrissy, I have a question for you, and maybe you can just inform the public. I've had, um, some people reach out to me that they did not get the district newsletter. So who would they contact? Is that a school contact or?
Yes, I would have them reach out to their school. Um, their school can look up and make sure that their emails are correct in, um, our student information system, so that is probably the, the best place for them to, to reach out to.
All right, thank you.
Michelle?
Yes.
Michelle, could I just, um, I've noticed that this seems to be a pattern in there, and you're right because I was on the same social media page as you were. There are quite a few people that you very kindly forwarded the newsletter to, but I think that it's been mentioned a number of times that sometimes these emails go to spam. And I know that, that the district has tried to remind parents a number of times that sometimes the emails do go to spam, but, uh, it's probably they need another reminder because I suspect that, you know, as long as parents have given their emails to the district, that it may be not so much that we're not sending them the email, but that it's not, you know, they're, it's not reaching them because it might be popping into spam. So I'm just wondering if maybe another reminder about that.
That's a good point. I forget about that.
Yeah, that's a great point.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so our next meeting is September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and unless
Wait, wait. I thought you were gonna do other comments. Because I have to say something else. Jen, of course you're a poll worker. Oh, my god.
Caroline, you read my mind.
Your speech at the opening day was phenomenal. Thank you, Nancy, for being there because it was absolutely perfect. Am I right, Chrissy? And I mean, it was just really perfect. And also, I mean, I have to say, my reaction was, of course she's a poll worker. Oh, my gosh.
I, well, I helped out in two thousand and twenty when there was a shortage, and, um, it's very interesting work. Um, and it's, you know, only, only a couple days a year. There, I have to say, I have tremendous respect for the clerk, everybody who works in that office, and then there is, um, a, a really big staff of temporary workers who are, you know, there for early voting and processing all of those mail-in ballots. That department does a terrific job. It's so impressive. So I just show up for half a day once or twice a year. It's not that impressive, but there are people who really are there for weeks at a time, um, helping out with this process. So it's, it's, and it's fascinating. So I would encourage anybody watching. If you have an interest, um, in that, please reach out to the clerk. If you have an interest, um, in that, please reach out to the clerk's office because they're always looking for, um, additional people.
Well, you won't see me, I already voted by mail. Although I may come and hold signs, I don't know.
All right. So I was gonna say, unless there's any other final comments, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
Um, roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. See you.
Thank you.
Thank you.